Look at that, well, sure is what I know. All right, I will call this special meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. It is Tuesday, the fifteenth of July, and this is our meeting to have a second interview with two of our city manager candidates, Zach Walker and Kathy Hadeen. All right, let's go with the first, bring in Mr. Walker.
We stopped by soda. And I was like, no, they had soda last night. Should have brought coffee up here. Said we have. Didn't do better. Try to see if I can think this.
Hello.
Caesar, tell you on the news this afternoon.
Uh oh.
Yeah. We're talking about the scrambling aid.
Oh, okay.
Very fun. Yeah, that was a fun little thing.
Yeah, good to see again. Councilman, good to see you.
I wonder if it's related to Balsam Lake.
I know that guy.
No, it's funny you say that because as we were walking up here, one of our police officers said, do you have a son who owns a cabin on Balsam Lake? Maybe.
Who wants to know?
I don't.
Okay, good.
Well, Zach, thanks for coming back tonight. Appreciate it. Had a good discussion last night and a lot of folks, a lot of good things that folks thought of your interview and wanted to bring her back for round two is we can learn more about you and ultimately make this decision. It's a very important decision. We, well, we were going to set this up more informally tonight. We're just going to ask not scripted questions, but folks can ask their questions and follow up and just go, we'll probably still go around so nobody jumps on their six questions all at once and dominates the conversation. And we'll, we'll just go around and let folks make this a conversational kind of opportunity and we'll go about forty-five minutes, twenty minutes? Forty-five minutes. So I'm not going to start because I started last night and whoever would like to start, jump on in.
Just clarifying question, are we also going to have opportunities for candidates to ask us questions?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, I, when I say conversation, I hope this is the two-way conversation. Perfect, absolutely. Thank you for that clarification. Yes. Let's jump in. Councilmember Dalisandro.
I'm not the only one that prepared, obviously. So I'm curious, I'd love for you to articulate like what your management style is. What do you find gratifying about being the leader of a large group of people? What taxes you? Like, give us a little bit of insight into like, you know, what you love about that and what you don't.
Sure. I want to say again, you gave a nice introduction, Mayor, but I do want to thank you all for the privilege and opportunity to be back with you tonight and to be at this stage in the process. It's, it's very humbling and gratifying, so thank you. You know, I spoke a little bit yesterday about the ICMA Code of Ethics and, and for me, that's really, you know, home base for me. Very serious about ethical principled style of management, making sure that my staff understand that our role and our job is to bring thoughtful, well-reasoned, well-researched options before you, give you our perspective on what we think would, would maybe be best, but understand it's not up for us to decide what's best. That's this council's role and responsibility. We need to get out of your way to make those decisions and then work our full heart and energy into putting into effect and implementing to the best of our ability whatever decision that council has made. So that's, that's kind of the underlying foundational principle of my leadership. I have really drawn a lot of source and inspiration from mantra that's commonly referred to as the Athenian oath. It was the oath of citizenship for people in ancient Greece. Lot of powerful stuff in there, but one of the things that really resonates with me is that we will leave this city not only not less, but greater and more beautiful than we found it. I think I had mentioned yesterday, could we move the mountain a teaspoon at a time today? Sometimes that, that's all you can do. Sometimes it's bigger jumps than that, but really try to motivate the staff of what can we do today? How can we get things moving just a little bit further, a little bit farther and, and leave things better than, than where we identified them today? In fact, I should tell you this, I give all of the council members when they start in our staff a, a challenge coin that says that on and just, you know, so they remember that and that they carry it on the hard days of what in the world am I doing here? This, this is what it's about for us. You know, you asked, kind of, kind of what does it for me? I draw a lot of inspiration from, from the staff. I love to, to get out and just see people feeling the pride of the work that they do at all levels of the organization. I love going out into the community and hearing what matters to folks. How do they see themselves in the community? What do they see in the community? Just love, I mean, I got into public service for that very reason. What, what kind of can be drained sometimes? It's, it's a necessary part of the job, but I, I hate when we have to tell people no. I, I love when we can find the yes, if, or the yes, buts, the workarounds, the, the compromises. Sometimes the answer is just no. And I, I tell folks, you know, if, if I'm out talking to you, that's probably because the answer is no, because staff can decide an issue at their level if they had the ability to. So that, it's a necessary part of the job, but to be blunt, it sucks. You have to do that.
So you've talked a lot about your staff.
Yeah.
What would your electives say about you? If I called them, what would they say if I asked, you know, what are, what are his three good points and his three challenging, challenges that he faces? What would they say?
I think they'd tell you I lead through relationships. I really value, it's important to me to build relationships, to get to know people on a, a personal level, because I feel like if I understand people at that level, I understand what motivates them, I understand what frustrates and challenges them, and then I can kind of play team psychologist, if you will, and get people to get the best out of them and help them maybe work through issues. It helps build trust and I talked about that yesterday, progress, me moving at the speed of trust. So, so I think they'd tell you I'm very relational. I think they would tell you I'm, I'm principled and ethical, but I'm always looking for the ways to find the solution to the problem that doesn't cross lines, that doesn't, you know, compromise our ethics, our values, anything like that, but I'm going to work relentlessly and tirelessly to try to get to yes. Nobody's going to outwork me. There, there's certainly people who, you know, maybe have had longer careers or something like, but nobody's going to, going to outwork me. I'm going to, I'm going to try to find a way to get to yes. I, I also would, would hope that they would tell you that I'm, I'm deeply committed, you know, in almost eighteen years of local government experience now, I've been in, in two cities. And, you know, there's certainly been challenges along the way in the career where maybe it would have been easier to say, you know, let's try some, look for an easier option, but I don't, I don't look for easy. I look for where do I find that alignment between what I like to do and the ability and the vision of, of the community to, to match those things? And I don't back away from a challenge, I don't back away from hard times, that's not going to send me running. You know, with, with the, over time, I do an annual review with the council and what they identified for, this was a few years back ago, but one of the things I identified was, we talked about a minute ago, not liking to tell people no, maybe even, you know, conflict adverse. And I would tell you, I, I really took that seriously of, okay, I, I need to get into the personality gem and make sure I work this issue. And so I started meeting with an executive coach who really helped me understand that the only difference between conflict and a problem is emotion. And if you just kind of suspend emotion and say, hey, we just got an issue, we got to figure this out together, it makes it a lot less strenuous and difficult to deal with those things. But I, you know, I know that about myself and I know that's something I need to be on guard about, not make sure that I don't backslide on that.
I'm interested, yesterday when we left, you said one of the big reasons that you're interested in Bloomington is because you want to do big things.
Yeah.
Bloomington is one of the places to do that. I mean, I'm just going to use World's Fair as an example, because it was big and public. There's literally in Minnesota, probably four cities who could do that and Bloomington is one of them. The piece that I'm interested in is yes, the big things are bright and flashy and they're fun, but what is your approach to the fundamentals? What is your approach to the small things? In addition to?
That's a great question. For me, there's, there's nothing too big. And things that maybe get defined as off the radar or smaller, those are big deals to me because they matter to somebody. I, I want somebody, you know, I vis, I envision the, the, the single mom with a few kids. She's got enough on her plate, you know? How, how is she going to get the kids to school in the morning and get to work on time and get the kids picked up and get them to the activities and pay all the bills and all that stuff? You know what she doesn't need to worry about? Are the roads smooth and clear to get where she's going? Is there safety in the neighborhood? Are there, you know, and meaningful things for her kids to do and, you know, parks to play in, activities, cultural enrichment, things of that nature? I, I want to make sure that we build a community like your mission statement says where people want to be. And, and to me, that, that isn't too small. That's the fundamental purpose of why I pick local government as a profession. You know, I told you I started in state and I didn't like the, the disconnect from the public. I didn't like that we just sent money off to, you know, some corner of the state. I, regional government was a little closer, but still, I didn't like that. I, I want to be in the community where I can know the people we're serving, where it can become very personal, make those relational connections, those emotional bonds and help solve those problems so that that community, that life, that, that world is a little bit better for somebody. I had a council member say something once that really resonated with me and that's more better days for more kids. And it, it, it's not just kids, it's everybody in that community, but I, the big flashy stuff is fun and it's, it's cool to, to see that, but I, I think progress happens in those everyday interactions with, at, at the neighborhood level, at the community level, and, and that stuff really drives me. That's what gets me excited and gets me going every day.
I can go next. So the city council, even prior to most of us being around the table, has been really committed to the principles of diversity, equity and inclusion. And I would say over the past ten years, it's just become, we've been more committed. Excuse me. Obviously, it's become a really tough topic now, just politically, right? I guess it probably are, it has been for a while, but extremely so now. And so I guess I'd be curious to know, you know, what do the principles of diversity, equity and inclusion mean to you? And, and specifically, you know, in that public service role and how have you advanced strategies to really advance DEI, whether it's in city operations and culture or in community?
I think you have to be very, very intentional about it because if, if you're putting that back of mind, then you're going to fall into what's maybe comfortable or familiar with you or, and to you. So some of the things that we have tried to do, and, and I would say our, our journey is, is nowhere near complete in Independence. We, we still are looking for those opportunities in those ways, but for example, we, we, for a long time historically had a citizens' police academy. We have broadened that out now into a general citizens' academy or opportunity, if you will, so folks can get into all facets of the organization and see how do the different departments work, who does what? But we're being very intentional about making sure that that academy is a reflection of the community. And if, if we're coming up short on something, then we're going to be purposeful, working through an elected official saying, hey, these are the demographics of the community, here's where we're at now. Who do you know? Who, who can help us? Who would be good to fit in that spot? Because ultimately, my goal and my hope is that that leads to kind of like what I read about you, Councilmember Moa, where you served on citizens' committees and you got more and more involved to the point where you were ready to step into elected leadership. I want us to groom those next level of elected officials who start on those committees at that level. And if we're intentional about it, we can, we can get there. We're, we're intentional about what we, what we've chosen to start to celebrate in the community. We just had our third annual Juneteenth celebration. I really love that we're giving a committee, a set aside committee, the ability to plan that and run it in the way that works for them. And we are just providing the financial resources for them to plan the event in a way that matters and is meaningful to and for them, you know? Don't let City Hall get in the way of that. Let the community who knows best plan that activity and let's provide the facilities and the financial resources for them to do that. Same thing, our Human Relations Commission has planned a Pride Walk and they're really good at planning it on the hottest, most. And then it usually ends with some sort of rain like this. Yeah, yeah, they've got a really good knack for that. But we, we've been intentional about that. And then opportunities where we have legislative authority at our level, you know, because like you said, things are becoming more and more controversial. We see that play out at our state government level and certainly the national level, but at the Independence level. We have changed our policy where spouses and domestic partners are eligible for benefits. We have passed a non-discrimination ordinance. We passed a conversion ban therapy. These were all things that in working with our community, our citizens' advisory committees, we heard were real fears, real needs that were keeping people from engaging in the community. And then the last thing I would mention to you is we overhauled our board and commission appointment process, the same thing I talked about, the citizens' academy, but to be very intentional and clear that we wanted board and commissions to have broad representation of the community as a whole. And again, that's been an evolution, a journey, but we are starting to see that turnover and that representation that was sorely missing before.
And have you, in, over the past nine years, received any kind of significant pushback from different parts of the community who maybe were against those things? Like I think specifically about like Juneteenth and Pride? And if so, you know, how did you navigate that?
Let me use my best Minnesotan, you betcha. Probably the example that stands out most vividly to me was our, our mayor at the time made a very concerted effort to fly the pride flag at City Hall. And that was met with some community outcry, which ultimately led to, at that time, a majority of council members passing a resolution that said, you know, here are the only flags that can fly at City Hall. The American flag, the state flag and the POW flag. How did we respond to that? The mayor has a balcony on her office at the time. She's like, nothing in the resolution says I can't lay that flag over my balcony. And she stood her ground about, and I said, go for it, Mayor. I'm, you know, I'm proud of her. I'm, I'm very proud we have not received any pushback on some of those other initiatives. I'm proud that our, a group that's called the Community of Concerned Citizens that plans the annual MLK Day celebration, that event is growing in attendance year over year and, and not just in the number of attendees, but the number of, of diversification of the age of attendees that are showing up at that event. It, it, that is rewarding to see that more and more people are plugging into these programs and I think they feel safer to come out and be a part of these things.
Bloomington's Concerned Citizen Group is not.
Got it.
Thank you so much.
Sure. Yep.
It's a quick question.
Sure.
What do you see as a city's financial, Bloomington, city of Bloomington's financial risk in the future, if any? And what are you, what would you do to mitigate that?
Yeah. Th, this has to be a very cautious and careful balancing act, in my opinion. And, and here's what I mean by that. You're, you're in a very strong financial position today, but if you're not very intentional and purposeful about that, those fortunes can change very quickly. You just saw just today that the Consumer Price Index jumped another two percent this month. It is my belief though, that the answer to that is not to always just treat your constituency as an ATM, of we've got to go raise more revenue. We have to start with the hard work of looking at City Hall, of what can we do? Are we being as efficient with our resources as we can, as innovative as we can? Are there cost savings measures in a large metropolitan region like this? Are there regional efforts where we could collaborate and share services? Got to be very, very certain that we are looking at every single opportunity to be wise stewards of those taxpayer dollars. But I do believe, I do believe this community has demonstrated through things like three triple A credit bond ratings and through a plan over the next ten years to pay down sixty-eight percent of your debt and a thirty-five percent reserve balance that you have been, you just have to continue to be wise stewards of those dollars, but make certain that continuing to put yourself in that position isn't just exclusively answered of, let's, let's make adjustments to the level of taxation. To me, that should be almost your measure of last resort.
Thank you.
Talk a lot about the relationships and things and how that helps you. Coming from Missouri to Minnesota, where I presume you don't have as many relationships, how would you go about building those in a way that could put you in a position to succeed?
So this might, I apologize in advance, it may be a little long-winded, but I do want to, since we're kind of getting to know each other better. I spent high school and graduated from high school in Fort Dodge, Iowa, which is about three hours south of here. My family would do weekend getaways up here, loved getting blasted out of the Metrodome by air. Not love more no, beaten up on the Royals, that was not fun. We would come up for church, youth group events, ski at, you know, Welch Village or Afternoon Out, stay at the Country Inn in Sweets in Bloomington. I was usually in the concussion protocol the next day when the rest of the group was at the Mall of America. So I've always had kind of an affinity for this area. And oddly enough, I had a college roommate from Apple Valley, so I'd come up here quite often to, you know, visit the college roommate in summer months. Since that time, I have a best friend who works for Wells Fargo and has settled in the area. Another friend who works across the street from mine, staying oddly enough at Bell Bank and is in the area. The timing was really weird. I got an email from Greg before Memorial Day weekend, when I was already coming up here for a weekend with my friends and to do a Royals Twins game. You took two out of three, not cool. We, I told Greg, you know, this is interesting, I'm going to be up there, I'm going to peek around and I'll let you know. And man, it, it, it really clicked with me. So I, I read these recruitment materials and I saw myself reflected in, like I talked yesterday, the challenges, the opportunities, the need. I, I see really devoted, caring, committed council members. Your citizen survey scores indicate a community that is proud and happy. Certainly you don't take that for granted, you keep working on that. So I want to tell you all of that to say that I, I'm not a stranger in a strange land. I don't pretend, you know, like I live here, but it's not a, a foreign country to, to me. Probably going to have to get a snow blower, which I swore off in those high school years, but we'll, we'll get back around to that. I, I look for relationships at, at all levels and all places. So things I think I see myself doing. Spending a lot of time with each of you. You are elected representatives of the ninety thousand people that call this place home. You can give me some of the quickest, fastest, best intel on this place. I know your thoughtful preparation for this involved community stakeholders, connecting with the people that you identified and whose input you valued enough that you wanted to have their feedback on this. Those are obviously people that are worth talking to. I think cities kind of have some core partnerships, the school district, so I'd want to reach out to the superintendents to work with them, the, the chamber leadership, any, any of the business community that you guys would identify, any neighborhood or religious leaders that are important voices and advocates in the community. So I'm going to lean heavily in those early days on your wisdom of, of who I need to, to connect to, then be very intentional about spending time with people listening. You know, I don't see myself coming in here to impose a will or blow things up. I see myself of, let's take something that's very strong and make it excellent. And again, at all levels, from making sure, you know, streets are cleared and smooth, parks are safe and well-maintained, all the way up to let's compete for events on the world stage. So I, I, I'm just going to make sure that I've sort of got that checklist of who do I need to spend time with and talk to and get their perspective and input and just keep building my Rolodex, not just of my network for those future relationships that I'll need to draw upon, but whose insight and wisdom is going to be essential to representing you well, leading the staff effectively and making sure the community gets the services that it deserves from, from this organization.
Okay, so everybody's had a chance to ask a question, correct?
I mean, I have.
Oh, you have.
So my question I like to ask folks when they're applying to things like, is what questions or, or question did we not ask or that you hoped we'd ask and, and why? And then go ahead and answer that question for us.
Yeah. What, I, I'm not throwing platitudes, you asked a, a lot of thoughtful questions yesterday. Here, here's probably something that I, I walked away hoping that I would have had a chance to talk a little bit about though, and, and that's my experience with hospitality and tourism industry. I, I know that is one of the top three revenue streams to the city. It's very evident in just driving around, you can see the role that plays in the community. I've been very fortunate in Independence to get to work in that arena quite a bit, you know, that we have one of thirteen presidential libraries in the community, so I've gotten a chance to work with the federal government and work to, in this day and age, preserve funding for that entity so that that can remain a vibrant, effective part of not just the community, but really the region. We are the jumping off place for the Westward Trail, so I've gotten to work with the National Frontier Trails Museum Association to help that organization continue to evolve and remain relevant and attractive. We have a fifty-eight hundred seat arena in our community. The anchor tenant for that is the Missouri Mavericks, so hockey's not a foreign concept to me. So I, I, I worked well with that. Most recently, something I'm really proud of is up until this past year, Independence ran tourism as a city department. And, you know, it was not an indictment on, on our staff. They, they worked well, they worked hard, but it, we were not good at it. Cities, in my opinion, aren't well-positioned to exclusively run a tourism department. We're at a competitive disadvantage, a, a lot of issues like that, okay? So we, in first step, I think I talked about this yesterday, I really believe in the power and importance of planning, make sure all those stakeholders get brought along in a, you know, meaningful, digestible way. So we did a tourism master plan, which really identified opportunities, weaknesses as well. And not surprisingly, that was one of the things it identified. And over the past eight months, we have set up and now officially launched Visit Independence, which is our own standalone nonprofit 501(c)(3) convention and visitors bureau for the city, hired the executive director and pushed that boat offshore and, and it's going now. So I, again, would reiterate, I know your proximity to downtown, your size and importance in the region, geographic location, the mall, these are all important factors that make tourism so important to, to Bloomington. I just want you to know that's not a foreign concept or foreign notion to me.
Thank you for that.
Just a quick time check, we have about fifteen minutes left. I apologize, I didn't realize you had an answer. But everybody's asked one now and I'll, I would give you an opportunity if you have any questions.
Yeah.
Does that seem fair?
Yeah, that's fair. You know, here's, I guess my questions fall into, into two categories. So when I, when I haven't been here at City Hall, my wife and I have spent the better part of two days driving around your community, really having a chance to visit with folks, start to really look deeper into the community. You know, what I would tell you is I, we, we are all in. We are very much interested, desiring, chomping at the bit, I might say. I, I can't tell you how excited and honored we would be to be a part of this. We started kind of this process. We started kind of this process um a year ago, um when I was finishing the efforts to get the general obligation bond that we talked about on the ballot, had a conversation with my wife and said, you know, if this bond is kind of a natural inflection point. I've got the city finances in a stable position, like I set out to do. We've done the first charter review in forty years and got the charter amendment passed. We've worked to rebuild trust in the organization, um negotiated and settled all of the collective bargaining agreements with our seven public employee bargaining units. Regardless of how this bond turns out, this is an opportunity for us to take a chance to think about what comes next. And when, when Bloomington presented itself, it really seemed like the answer to that thought that we had been having about what might be that next opportunity. If, if this is decided that it's not the right opportunity, I say it very respectfully, it won't be me making that decision because I'm all in. So my, my two questions really fall into one category of, there anything before I walk out that door tonight that would leave you wondering, you know, or, or hesitant? And number two, I have probably three or four questions of things that would help me start to get my head in the right space to start planning to, to lead this organization. So maybe I'll start with the, um, you know, is there anything else that I have not answered? Any concerns that I could clarify, um so I know I left everything on the field, so to speak?
There's one, there's one idea I had that I, I wrote down as, you know, it'd be very interesting just to hear what you have to say about it. And if you spent time here and everything, I feel more comfortable putting you on the spot with this one as opposed to before. So I'm glad to hear that. Give us your elevator pitch for Bloomington. In thirty seconds, you know, tell us why.
Bloomington is a first-string suburb of Minneapolis. You can get all the big city amenities without having to be downtown and all of the noise and cacophony and maybe diminished quality of life issues that come with being a urban uh living dweller. You've got rich culture, um commitment to the arts, you're launching a quality uh creative placemaking plan tomorrow night that I wish I could stick around for. You're very intentional about the goals of, of this community, the vision. There seems to be pretty good alignment among the council about what the vision is here. The residents are very proud of this community as reflected in your citizen satisfaction survey. You, you've got um all of the amenities that somebody is going to look for uh to either call this place home or to locate their business here.
Appreciate you, and appreciate you didn't hesitate.
Yep.
Anybody else with a, a question to his answer, question, question answer?
Yeah, I got the, the only thing I had on my list was the diversity question and the other question was environmental sustainability.
Yeah.
Talk a little bit about that.
Would love to, thank you for the chance on that. So um couple of things, in Independence, we uh own and operate three different public utilities. Our, our water one has probably historically been best positioned. We're very fortunate now, I'm not gonna try to compete with your water. Natural aqua for our water from the Missouri River. So very low um environmental impact to treat that water and, and, and produce that for the community. So that, that's been top-notch. Our, when I got to the city, our um storm water and sanitary sewer system were a combined system, which on a night like this was chaos because obviously the plant couldn't handle what was coming in and you bypassed into the Missouri River and the Department of Natural Resources did not like that. So we did a seventy million dollar capital plan to segregate that system. And, you know, much more sustainable and environmental friendly than what we were before. And then on our electric utility, uh when I got there, the city was operating two coal-fired power plants. During my time, we decommissioned one of those coal plants. The second one phased from coal to natural gas. And then most recently, we've actually shut that plant down. We've got six combustion turbines, we're having conversations about what the future of that looks like, those are diesel-fueled. But right now, we are purchasing most of our power off the grid. We're in this huge consortium called the Southwest Power Pool, our power's coming from all over. But where we're making our investments mostly now, we've started two community solar farms. They're still small, they're about eleven megawatts, but it's, it's a start. We're buying a tremendous amount of power out of Kansas from a wind farm out there. But really evolving that um model of how the electric utility operates to become more friendly, reduce the overall carbon footprint of that. I, I'll be very honest with you, I told you, you have to follow the will of the council, that's, it's their decision. When, when I was first hired, um we had a, a, a council that passed a resolution with a very ambitious agenda to be the, the greenest city in America. And we started putting in electric car chargers across town, we went to an all-electric vehicle fleet, started doing some energy efficiency upgrades to some of our antiquated city facilities. Some of that leadership's turned over now and that is not necessarily as front of mind as it was, but where we can still kind of make that business case, um maybe if it's not leading with the environmental conversation, we're still making some of those changes that are more environmentally sustainable. So those are a few quick examples of some of the areas where we, we've tried to affect really greatly.
Thanks for that whole historical context.
Yeah, and I just real, very quickly, our, our regional council is still leading on this issue. They've got the Climate Action KC playbook that we've adopted, um you know, and, and are working to affect as many of the changes in that playbook at the regional level that we can contribute to.
If I may.
Yes, sir.
Totally out of, we're conversing about right now. But how would you approach the, for lack of better words, the marginalized population that don't fall into, into the fault of all the, the plans the city has in mind? You know, there's always a group of people that don't see eye to eye with what is planned, right? So how would you approach them, having, you know, them, a large number of people, but still the minority? How would you converse with them and try to coerce them or, or convince them that the plans the city has are for the overall benefit, including theirs? How would you approach that? You know, how, knowing that they're not, they don't always take uh all the information that is given to them in a positive manner?
Yeah, uh for, for me, it, it's intentionality, it's um who have we engaged? I think one thing I've noticed that you guys do very well is being intentional about meeting people where they're at. For example, the budget process, you know, having these um tables set up at community events and asking people for their feedback. But as I mentioned earlier, some people are just trying to get by day to day and they don't necessarily have the time to go to the community events. What I have found works, when I say being intentional, is identifying leaders in different communities who are underrepresented. And building, we talked earlier about getting, you know, a network and build, finding those individuals and building a personal relationship and a trust with them. And so that then I could take, fill in the blank plan or conversation that's being discussed at the council level and say, here's something that the council is discussing, we really haven't heard from your community on this. Can you help me get some feedback on it? Is there, is there a place that I could come and, and meet folks? Could you make an introduction? Do you want to take it and present it to them and bring the feedback back to me? What would be most meaningful and most effective so we can get feedback from a group whose voice and perspective and insight isn't being reflected in whatever topic? You just, you have to be intentional about it. You have to make sure that you're going out of your way to not overlook or forget somebody or some group or some part. It's critical to a successful, it's to building trust. When you need those on the hard days, that community's got to remember that I trust that person. And if, if they're telling me this is happening, they've gone out of their way to build trust with me.
One other area that I don't think we've talked about, but is a priority for the community is housing.
Right.
Can you talk a little bit to what you've done there and your thoughts?
Yeah, um so in Independence, we are, we are kinda, you could run a line right down the middle and separate east independence and west independence. East independence is kind of the newer growth area in my presentation yesterday. Recently, we adopted a um, two things. Uh update to our comprehensive development plan, which hadn't been touched in twenty-five years, and a new housing development strategy that identified gaps in the, in the marketplace. That has allowed us to go to the regional Kansas City Home Builders Association and shop that around and show them what our need is. And then through them, start to identify developers who could help fill that gap. And, and so we have seen the last few years, twelve hundred new um Class A market rate apartments, but also putting some restrictions on there about how many of those units have to be affordable. Now, this last session, the Missouri legislature decided that wasn't a good idea and they have cut our ability to do that, but we grandfathered the previous ones in, so I'm proud that we do have some of that reflected in there. On the western side, that is the older, original part of town. That's where a lot of housing popped up post-war as well. Uh so a couple of things that we have done to try to stabilize and reinvest in those neighborhoods. We're using a substantial portion of our community development block grant funds to focus on minor home repair or infill uh housing. We are not leading that effort. I again believe that there are some people are just better suited to lead an effort than City Hall. So we have partnered with our local Habitat for Humanity organization. They are filtering the applications to see who's best qualified for those minor home repair grants. And then they are using those funds to strategically build new housing in some of those areas where we've just got a vacant lot because a, a, a house, housing stock has been torn down. One of the recent things that we did that I'm really excited about, this area of town that we call Englewood, was kind of your typical middle-class uh nineteen fifties neighborhood. And then over time, disinvestment really fell off and, and slouched off. A group of artists have come in over the last few years and got a designated arts district for that area. Now they're starting to work the next phase of their plan, which is to bring density back by creating what they're calling artist housing. So we created a special zoning district that's allowing people to do cottage-style housing. There's lots of names, accessory dwelling units, et cetera. But they can put these on uh lots, you know, that were probably typically just residential, single-family residents and put four, three or four of those on a single lot. It's working wonders. So for me, it's be open to a diversity of ideas because the market, more so than ever, has a diversity of demands. And, you know, there's not a one-size-fits-all answer for the community. Let's work to see what parts of the community are open to different ideas and then match that with um what's, you know, acceptable and feasible in those areas.
All right, folks, we are at time. Zach, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming back this evening, thanks for spending a couple of days in our city. Been a pleasure to get to know you and I hope um and I, I hope you, you've got a good view of what this city is and understand it a little bit more. And I hope you understand and, and know Zach a little bit better and, and help form a decision. So thank you so very much.
From the, from the bottom of my heart, I appreciate your hospitality. Community's been wonderful to my wife and I. My wife and daughter previously, again bizarrely, had a trip planned uh for, for next week uh to the Mall of America. So they might be here house shopping or you might get an eleven-year-old meat mug, I don't know. Like, I, I have been, I've been treated very well, I'm very appreciative and best of luck in your, in your search.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, council member, thank you. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. Thank you, council member, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Nice to meet you guys. Have a good evening.
Very Minnesota. Listen, the sun's out now, oh yes. Melissa on to keep us.
We're gonna hit it on the timer.
Kind of well, I know, yeah.
Mine dried.
No, you weren't. Yeah, I had the same, basically the same question when I could eat. Basically, but he covered everything.
Yeah.
Oh, this is an old china.
Oh, it is, yeah.
This is really a nice room.
Nice room, you said? For conference.
Oh, I just, I mean.
Oh, it is raining.
I mean, it's just kind of a, tree isn't real, I don't know if you noticed that, but.
I do think it's funny that we have like a fake.
All right, I gotta take some points off of that.
Two fake trees, two fake.
No, I just, no, I just feel like it's more airy or, you know, the light kind of comes in here in a way that.
I like the, the artwork though, with like a stadium there.
Is that the mall?
That's Baltimore.
That's the mall?
That's, that's an aerial view of the city.
We should build, we should build.
The airport.
Oh, it's before IKEA, that's why.
It doesn't have the north-to-south runway yet.
Yeah. Yeah, we should build a stadium over there.
We should. As soon as everybody's back, I want, one thing I want to cover before our next interview, it'll only take just a minute.
That little man.
Yeah, it just like the Hague Room, it always felt dark and there was bigger, I like that it's bigger.
I thought this one was dark because all these lights were turned off.
Yeah, I mean, it's dark, I mean, that was because I was like really tired yesterday. It was dark yesterday, that's one thing, you know, it normally is light in here. So I don't know. Just one of our, I think it's one of our nicer conference rooms. So uh when I was in Rotary, we had a, I was, or was applying for Rotary Scholarship, they used to always use the Ozburgh. Big and it's like there's a replica in, in Germany of it. Well, because I'm.
Sorry, Greg.
That's okay.
It's rainbow, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, you can't pass up the rainbows. All right, so before we start our next interview, I just, I kind of want to pose a question to the council. City Hall yesterday here received a uh voicemail from a former council member for Zach. Left a voicemail message, um wanted to just pass along, from a former council member from Independence, wanted to pass along their thoughts about Zach. And wanted to see if he felt it was appropriate to hear that, to play that. I think that should just be your decision, or I also didn't want to make the decision not to let you hear that and we just go without it, so.
Personally, I would like to hear it and I will say that I've also heard from local people with regards to Kathy too, so. So I don't, I don't think it.
My, my question on timing would be, is that the kind of thing that we would do in terms of like a reference check post?
Oh, we absolutely would do that anyway.
Yeah.
But since it happened unsolicited, we have this message and I want you to decide whether.
Right.
You want to hear it and consider it or not.
I guess my concern about doing that is, do we have something equal for Kathy? And then also, what were the circumstances behind that person leaving the, that, the council? So maybe, you know, was it good, was it bad, was it, you know, indifferent, I, we just don't, so I just, I get concerned that that might unduly influence one way or the other and there's no corresponding.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, for Kathy, that's my concern.
Yeah, it's a positive.
Okay.
It's a positive voicemail and, and I think the only counter to that would be what Council Member Nelson said, that he had received some unsolicited feedback from people about Kathy.
Yeah, so that what I would say is if we're gonna allow something positive about him, to, to be fair, I also want to hear something positive about Kathy, because I just, I, I don't want to have that imbalance and I just.
I, I guess my question would be, in normal course of things, in a city manager interview process, would you even solicit a city council member's opinion?
No, and this was unsolicited.
But I'm not, I'm not, that's not a critique of you, Greg. My question is, do we care about what other city council members think? That's what I'm trying to say, like, like, that's different than asking about like the profession of the job and asking inter, like, the, the people that will ask for references will not be city council, elected officials is my point.
Yeah, so we do reference checks at the end, once you've identified the person you're interested in, if they're not your employee. And we would solicit references from his current elected officials, but not past elected officials.
Okay, you would?
We would.
Okay.
Absolutely, because that's who he reports to.
Right, okay.
Hundred percent.
And I'll say, I, I've talked to half a dozen or more people.
And I'll say, I, I've talked to half a dozen or more people who have had comments about different candidates. And I've had the conversation with them, I've listened to them and thanked them for their input.
Yeah.
And that's about the extent of it. But there are people that I know and people that I, you know, trust their judgment and understand what they're calling, why they're calling, they've made a connection.
I mean, it's a big deal to get this job. Everybody's gonna want their person, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. There's nothing wrong with that.
And I only, exactly, there's nothing wrong with it. And I only say that because, you know, somebody called me unsolicited, without knowing who that person was, you know, you take it with a huge grain of salt because you don't, you just don't know that person.
Right.
That's unlike the, the half dozen people that I did talk to who I knew very well.
So.
And if the call was made to me, honestly, I would have just kept it in my pocket because it was for me. But the call was made to City Hall.
Yeah.
Here, the message was left here. So I think, you know, you just need to decide what you want to do with that.
The truth is, all I, all I really cared about was knowing whether or not it was generally positive or not. Like, I don't need to hear it, but I'm also fine hearing it if everybody else wants to hear it. But it, that was the piece of information that I would need anyway.
Will we have access otherwise if you wouldn't mention it?
I don't, that's a good question. So the message was forwarded to me from one of your staff. I don't know what else would have been done with that. I think they didn't, they weren't sure what to do with it, so they asked me to raise the issue.
I'm comfortable not hearing it, to be honest.
Buddy?
I'm comfortable not hearing it.
Same.
Okay.
Oh, I just, I, I agreed. I just generally wanted to know if it was positive or negative. And, I mean, to your point, like, we don't know the person or, you know, the circumstances or, you know, so.
Yep. And, and honestly, I would say the same thing if it was bad.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, if it was less than positive, I, I wouldn't want to hear it because I don't know the person. I don't, there's no context around it.
Yeah. Okay, that's all we need to do and we have still about five minutes left before starting the next candidate.
Addition to the interview process. And it's a roll of candidates. Just have their people call in.
Call in, right? You know, just, you know. Be interesting, data point, it'd be interesting, you know.
Like I said, I've talked to a bunch of people who've had something to say, but I think three of the fourth candidates have had people call.
Okay.
I was gonna be locked out again.
I mean, I don't expect any surprise. I would.
Sure we're doing the right thing, right?
I mean, I do it all the time.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Got my job exactly that way. The last two times I got a job.
Yep, that's exactly right.
That worked out well.
Got sticked in the face.
Feel like it's every hour on the hour.
Way T M, way T M. I would try to make you go through what it was you're doing and I'm like, come on.
And we're, we can ask different questions this time. Yeah.
Same question every candidate. That'd be fair. Different, it's a different format though.
Yeah.
No, I think that's good because my question would make no sense.
Glad you came to that conclusion. I was gonna say next.
Mine would.
Your flip. Very good. I'm officially welcoming you.
Thank you very much.
Did you make it through the rain?
I did. I saw a council member make the run from his truck. And I was like, I have some time, I'll wait a little bit longer. And so it lightens up as I, as I went through. Although, uh, Councilmember Loman, did you make it across the street?
I did. Yeah, I made it just before, I'm like, I should leave right now. I don't know what the instinct was. I feel the pellets dropping on me and I just made it just in time.
I could see it as I was driving, I was like, I'm not gonna beat that. I'm not gonna beat it. Right.
Wait just a moment for Councilmember Delisando to return.
Absolutely.
Way too much information about what she was having.
Okay, I can imagine.
Sorry, I was looking at that cloth. Yes. Yeah, it's a mess. Okay, it's okay.
Ready to go? All right. Happy welcome back.
Thank you.
Very glad to have you back here and to continue this conversation. The way we have it set up, we've got about forty-five minutes to talk to you. Much more informal this time. We're not, we don't have set questions. We're, we're gonna bounce around, we're gonna let folks ask questions. And then what we'll do is, once everybody's asked a question, then it could be your turn where you can ask us questions.
Okay.
From there.
Okay.
And we'll be done here in forty-five minutes and then we'll start our conversation. So, there we go.
Sounds good.
All right. And I started last night, so I'm not gonna start tonight.
Okay.
Who wants to jump in?
Like Lana said. Fair enough. All right, great to see you again. So, you know, I, I think, I think operationally, we've, we have, because we have a, a bit of information about that's your style and things of that nature. What I, what I feel like I'm very interested in having you talk about is what your, what your vision for Bloomington is. So if you, if you had an opportunity, and it doesn't have to be based on what we've already got in place necessarily, but if you had an opportunity to, to share what you thought would be the best way for knowing the resources that we have and everything for you to, to kind of move us over the next ten years, what would be your top ideas?
Ten years.
It could be thirty if you want.
Five. Or five.
Yeah, yeah, whatever, whatever you like in terms of vision.
I appreciate this. I think, I think about this in a couple of different ways. So I think about it in terms of things that I believe that we need to focus on as a city to continue to progress and to continue to move the city forward. And then I also think about, what does technology look like in the next five, ten, fifteen, thirty years? And so I'll start with the, the practical of, actually, I don't know which one of those is practical, but I'll start with some of the things that I mentioned yesterday, which is, we have to figure out what a stable workforce looks like, especially as changes come our way, from all different places, global, local, you know. Was sitting today and having a conversation with someone who is a part of a business that's thinking about no longer having a presence here in the city of Bloomington. And some of the reasons about what they were looking for spoke to how people get their work done and how they get it done differently today and how they want to get it done. And that may not mean having a seat in the space that we're in. So what does that mean for us? What does that mean for our tax base? What does that mean for what fuels city services to make us move forward? And how do we adapt so that we can keep drawing them in? So thinking about how technology is making work different, but how we lean into that technology, because government can be very slow to lean into technology. So what does that look like for us to lean into that technology in order to still be enticing for a community to have workplaces and workforces? And what that, you know, leaning into what that traded sector is and making sure that, you know, we are still a, a hub, even if that work isn't being done or sold here, but it's benefiting our community so that we can move forward. So I think about technology and how technology plays a role in, in how we, how we're gonna work differently. And we have to find ways to keep up with that. And that's a challenge, I think, for government agencies. We don't always have the funds to do so. I also think about, uh, stable workforce internally. What does that look like? You know, as we hear from our community, we continue to hear that can't keep raising taxes. So if we can't keep raising taxes and adding funds to the base of how we get our programming done, what does our programming look like? What do the resources look like? How do we adjust as we move forward? We have to make some decisions, I believe, in the next, in the short term, to help us think about how we are going to be here in the long term. We are very, uh, we treat our employees well here. And we need to think about how we continue to treat our employees well, but we may have to adapt what that looks like as we think about the stability of what we do here in the long term. Housing, again, is huge. If we don't have people who are in our community to benefit from the amazing spaces that we have here, then, then, then what are we doing? So we have to make sure that people want to stay here, that they want to live here. And we hear different reasons about why people love being here and why they want to raise children here or why they want to grow old here. And we hear different reasons about why people feel like they need to move out of here. And so for whatever those different reasons are, if it's affordability, we need to figure out how we fit and how we can be more affordable. And it's not only affordable apartments, it's affordable, single-family homes. It's thinking outside the box of what a home looks like. And I, you know, I think we're doing that and I think we have to start acting on that in ways that will come to fruition in the next five to ten years. And again, financial stability and debt management, I think this is huge. I think we continue to watch what debt, debt management looks like and how much debt we can take on as a, as a city as a whole and what kind of risks that we could take as we continue to figure that out. There's a lot of different options still to lean into when it comes to financing the work that we want to do. And so we need to be as creative as possible, but we also need to look to the private sector for private and public partnerships. And I think there's more of that that can be done in the city as we figure out how to be, uh, more innovative as we move forward. And then, finally, it's, it's continuing to shape and bend and fit in to the expectations of our community and what people want from us as a workforce and investing in the people who do the amazing work that they do on a day-to-day basis. Thanks, yeah.
I'll jump in. Yeah, I'll jump in. So, just looking over your resume, this would be the first time that there's no assistant or deputy in front of your title. And you would be the captain of the ship, leading Bloomington into the future. What is your stop, start, continue, making this jump and transition?
Um, can you say a little bit more and explain a little bit more what you mean by stop, start, continue?
It's, you're gonna have different roles, different responsibilities, different things that you're gonna be accountable for, that is different from an assistant city manager, from a deputy county manager. What are the things that you've recognized that you're gonna have to let go willingly or not? That you necessarily have to pick up? And the things that you, whether it's a core value or whatever it is that you cannot let go that you must continue to do? Those are the things I'm interested in.
Okay. Well, core values drive me. And so always at the center of who I am is integrity and respect. And those are basic. I start there and I have expectations and everybody else is there with me. I think my entire life feels like I have been in a position where I'm either pushed or thrown or stepped into, what do we call it? Stretch goals, like spaces where I haven't been before and I excel. I excel because I'm competitive and I don't like to fail. And I don't say yes to things that I don't think, I, I say yes to things that I know I can accomplish as I move forward. I have, it starts all the way back into college, where I was a resident and, and the dorms and my second year in, they're like, we need you to be a C A because somebody quit and you seem like a good person to do it. I had no idea what that means. And all I know is my dad said, it costs, you're, you're gonna save us on food and we don't have to pay for your room and you don't have to pay for that. I was like, sweet, sounds great. So, and it moved into the next position and the next position. And what I found is, I have colleagues, right? When I'm in these positions. And I have to find that space where there's now boundaries. Where I'm now in that leadership position, I then have to have a different mindset. But that level of respect and that level of integrity stays the same. I do recognize that in this position, the model that's been created is a good model and I would love to keep that model, which is the city manager and two deputy city managers. And for me, that is giving up a connection to leaders here that I hold dear. And so there is a need to step back and allow someone else to come into that space and allow someone else to build those relationships and to continue to move things on. I do delegate just fine. I have no problem with delegation and with ensuring that this part isn't my role, this is somebody else's role. In fact, I coach others to be able to take a look at situations and understand, when is it your turn to step in and when do you step back and help other people solve the problem? And you're there as somebody to help guide and to help move, move things forward. That's actually something that I've been doing here for the last year. There's been, I think what I feel has happened in the past, a lot of reliance on that one role to make decisions. And this past year has been building up people's abilities to make decisions at multiple levels and to work together and to problem solve and only come to me when they're stuck and truly stuck after they've already tried to work through something. When you create a space where you don't allow for that partnership to happen, bottleneck happens, things don't get done, you can't sign things, you're not innovative, you don't have time to vision. And I think that's what we need in this, in the city, is somebody who can be in a space to be more strategic and to be more visionary and to be out there and making those connections in those spaces. So for me, I, I, I find an opportunity here that I've been in before while not in that top, top position, but have been pushed into positions where I have to make multiple decisions for thousands of people and, and have to make sure that I'm communicating. At the same time, nobody does anything alone. No job does anything alone. I don't know who does stuff on their own without connecting with anybody else. There are all of you who sit here in these spaces. You play a role in the ability of the city manager to excel and to succeed. And then there's the top leadership team. And that's how I work in a collaborative way. I, I work in a way that allows me to go into spaces with ideas, but allows those ideas to either come from somewhere else or together as a group. I also know, at the end of the day, somebody has to make a decision. And I'm absolutely capable of that and I do it and I'm excited for the opportunity.
Thank you.
So on a kind of similar note, what would you say is the kind of ideal role of a city manager? Kind of the, like, the things that, I guess maybe another way to put it is like, what would be kind of the top five priorities that you would have coming into this position? And how do your specific strengths and leadership skills make you the best person to do those?
Yeah. I always love the multifaceted questions and trying to figure out if I'll remember how to answer all of them. I, um, because I'm here, I, I know some of the things that we need. We, uh, we need to continue to refine how we budget in this space. So that's a top priority for me. If we want to get to a space as a city to not consistently have double-digit levies year after year after year, we have to think differently about how we do a budgeting process and we are. And part of what my leadership has been a part of this last year is the priority-based budgeting. And you all have been a part of that. And it's very intentional to get us to think about how to do this differently because we can't keep adding things on top of each other and putting that on the community to continue to, to, to pay for. We, we just can't keep doing that. And, and so being more, working on the budget and changing a model, being more transparent, both internally and externally, so not, not only about budget, but just communication in general, it still needs improvement in this space. it still needs improvement in this space. And so that is a, is a top priority for me. Working with all of you and working with a council and ensuring that the, that the city council feels like a group. And I don't want to go as far as a team and you all get to define that on your own, but that it's something that we do together as we move work forward. Because if I'm in a spot and I'm working to lead an organization and operations, but you're in a spot that you're not working together and you're not gelling to get these ideas forward, we're going like this and one group's going in this direction, another group is going in another direction. And so working with all of you to continue to understand what works well for you, what your styles are, how you want to lead in the city as elected officials and bringing those pieces more closely aligned with operation and policymaking is also a priority as I move forward. I think staff as a whole are continuing to, and in this process is a part of it, they're continuing to feel uncertainty of what does it mean for us to work here at the, at the city of Bloomington? And so working to help create balance for staff and a short, you know, these are the most short-term priorities as I'm moving forward, but will help us in the long run. If people feel like this is where I want to be, the job that I want to do, I feel supported, they're going to, they're gonna do better work because they're gonna want to be here, they want to keep moving forward. So helping to kind of bring that stability as we move forward. My strengths, I'm definitely a, I'm a flexible leader. I mean, these are like all keywords that a lot of people use, but I start with people. I invest in people. I, I spoke about coaching. I, I think in a former life, I was a sociologist. So I, I get to know people to understand what makes you work? What makes you want to do the thing that you want to do? And then I get to know groups and how groups work together and what makes those groups work. And I bring those things together and I utilize what I know and what I learned from those one-on-one connections and those group connections to help form how we can get work done and, and move work forward. It's how I motivate. I love being able to help motivate people in, in situations. And I love taking opportunities like the one that we had last night where a, a group of people worked really hard on an item and it, it didn't work out for them. There are learnings in there. There are things that worked out that I can remind them about and help them learn from ways in which it, it's not a failure. There's actually different avenues that we can take. There's different ways that we can work through this and we can actually build on this. And there's some positives that actually were positives for other people in that space. So I try to take situations and work with people and help them see what the opportunities are as well. And I, I see that as a strength. I have, I have a, I don't know that this is a good thing. I just have a lot of capacity to lean into a lot of things and that gets me in trouble sometimes. That's the part of, and part of your question of what do you have to let go of? Because I like to be a part of things. When you get into the positions where you're the leader and not the doer anymore, there's, there's, you have to be able to know when you can step back and when you need to allow other people to be that doer. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll jump in here and I, I got that opportunity to, to observe that. You were talking to the staff yesterday, being positive. Want to give you the opportunity to respond to a couple of different items. Yesterday during your, during the interview, you had raised an example of where you allowed a community group to kind of gain or get into a circumstance or situation to elevate that group to a place where they could be able to participate in the process. And I wanted you to kind of talk a little bit more about the background and, you know, your authority, how, how that worked and just, because I think there's some confusion among, you know, among some of us here about that. And then the other one, you can respond to either or both of these things, is just the process of seeking this position in terms of, you know, how you kind of came to a point where you kind of changed. You know, you kind of changed and then you were interested in that position. If you want to talk about that process and, and kind of what that looked like and kind of walk through that if you, those are the two items I have.
Okay. Can you say a little bit more about what the confusion was about the, the commission that I brought into the budget process?
And I'm not gonna be able to do that while if anybody else wants to jump in.
I'll jump in. It was by my commission. What I had heard that maybe other people did not hear exactly the same was that they, this community group had the right to approve the budget before it went to the council and they got elevated to the same level as the electeds. And that may not have been accurate. I may, so I think that was where some of the confusion was.
Yes. Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you for explaining that and thanks for the questions. So Ramsey County has a long history of community engagement, of working through barriers that communities experience. And part of the, the goals and the asks of the county board and the then permission is for staff, leaders at all levels to work with community, to bring them in, to be a part of processes. And so my role is to figure out how to do that i- in that space. And so the Black Community Commission is similar to the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Group, groups that are brought together, that raise their hand to be a part of community groups that are, want to work on something. I had the ability and the, the permission and the power to be able to bring them into the space to help be a part of the budget process. So it's similar to here. If you were to sit at a group with the Sustainability Commission or another commission and the two of you sit together to work through a process together. Ultimately, the, the, the group that approved the budget is the county board. They're the ones who sign off. They're the ones, does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. And then your other question, is it okay if I answer both?
Yeah, please. It's up to you.
So the process of seeking the position, and I appreciate this. I, I've had this question asked of me a couple of times. You know, I think we all were a little bit, or maybe you all weren't, but I was a little bit taken aback when I learned that the previous city manager was no longer going to be the city manager. And, because I had just gotten here only six months before that. And so, you know, I thought about it and I'm like, I came here to be the, the deputy city manager, that's what I came here to be. We had a lot of discussions with our team. We had a lot of discussions with senior leadership, senior management, the executive management team. And there was a consensus that things were hard and that I was doing a good job in my role and, and a big, huge push for me to apply for this role. Lots of conversations with people, leaders at all levels. Honestly, it's a lot of pressure. There's a lot of people in this space who are, are hoping for an outcome here. And so I thought about it and I changed my mind based on the conversations that I had with key leaders in the space. And so that's, that's basically, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I wanted to give you the opportunity.
Yep.
You talked about how you develop relationships within the organization internally, how you develop people and all that. Can you talk a little bit about your process and goals in terms of external relationships? Obviously, the city manager is a key leadership position within the overall community at the state level, at the national level. How do you see that going for you and what, how would you approach that?
I appreciate that. Being in local government in the metro area for 25 years, I just started my career at the city of New Brighton as a, I worked at a driving range and picked up golf balls. I actually broke the cushman and I didn't get to pick up the golf balls anymore. It's a long time ago and I think, I don't know who knows Tanya Ant, but I think she was working at the time. Anyway, I have a lot of relationships. I make a lot of relationships. I have a lot of connections. I have connections at the local level. I have connections in the governor's office. I have connections with state representatives and with federal, you know, legislators. Over time, you just, you get to know a lot of people and it gets to be, we used to call it Saint Small and it's small Minnesota and it's, and it's continuing to make those connections and come back around and have conversations. I was having a conversation today with, with our director of the Port Authority and we, we were talking about how sometimes conversations with business owners, you wonder, is it, is it gonna go anywhere? And especially if it's somebody who may not end up being here anymore. And one thing that I, I know to be true, and it's the same of like internal staff, I invest everything I can into somebody, whether they're gonna stay, stay somewhere for three years or if they're gonna stay somewhere for eight years, because you are going to meet them again. You're gonna connect with them again. This is a small world. You are going to run into these people again. And so it's important to me to nurture those relationships. Sometimes it's a, it's a making a connection through a connection because I don't know everybody. And so it's using the people around you in a positive way to make sure that, hey, I need to go get to know this person because this is happening in this community. Can you help me do that? And other times it's me just going up and connecting with people in different spaces. But my 25 years in, in this, in these different cities and county and then other people moving around, I just have a lot of connections. I, you know, my work with social services in Ramsey County has me very connected to Hennepin County. So when Commissioner Gattell calls and says, hey, I got a family up the street who needs a little assistance, who can you connect with? I know the person who works with her on her end that I can call and say, hey, can you give me a little bit more information about this? Because our, our, you know, public health nurses over here need to go make a visit. That makes this job a lot, a lot easier when you, when you've been here this long and you've had these connections.
So you talk about the connections on, in the, on a community level and at state level in the governor's office and so on. How much of your connection with the electeds that you worked for in, in Ramsey County? So then what would they say about your years there and how would they evaluate you? And what would they say, well, there's one thing that Kathy needs to work on, it's this?
Yeah, I appreciate that. There is a video out there of Kathy Hadine Day on July 2nd, so you can watch that. I got a, I got a proclamation and county board chair presented it to me. It is fun and it popped up apparently on people's emails or I don't know what it popped up on, but I got about four or five messages on July 2nd of this year and people were like, happy Kathy Hadine Day. What are you talking about? I was like, oh my gosh, I forgot. I, I think they would tell you that I am very committed. I, that, you know, being in that agency for 23 years, I like to work, I like to work hard and I like to, if I believe in something, I'm, I'm going to stick with it and I'm going to work to ensure that, that I am a leader. I think, you know, one of, one of the commissioners who now is at the Met Council will tell you that, and she has said to me in the past, you know, the way that you invest in other people isn't done. It's not done that way by other people. And so I think that investment, lifting people up, ensuring that I put others first and mission first before me in order for us to move those things forward. I think those are, those are some things you might hear from people. They might say I have a nice sense of humor. They might, you know, they might say a couple of other nice things. But things to work on, I think, you know, one of them gave me advice of maybe you need to go work at the city so that you have different opportunities to lead different areas and can grow in areas that you haven't, haven't worked in before. And so I think the advice that I've gotten in the past is more about building a well-rounded background that allows me to have just more opportunities for growth and more opportunities to learn and to have more knowledge in different areas around local government.
All right. I have an easy question for you. You already saw multiple departments at Ramsey County, right? Police, fire, public health. How do you balance competing priorities between departments? In general, I mean, not in specific departments, but.
Yeah, I think it's a good question. You have to, I rely on multiple people to balance those priorities. At one point, this is not, I don't recommend this. Nobody should have 25 director parts. At one point I had 25 director parts. That's not okay. And I had to figure out how, what was gonna be up here, what's gonna be down here? Who can actually manage on their own and they don't, they don't need as much of me as other people. And so for me, it's understanding what are the things that are, we have to get this done. There's a deadline. There is, there's, there's a grant tied to it. There's a timeline. So it depends, the priorities depend. But it also connected to our strategic plan and our strategic priorities. And so ensuring that the things that needed to get done were getting done because these are the things that we said that we were going to do as a system is also really important. But for me, it's also empowering others to be able to do their jobs and to lead and to remind people, this is like, you can actually do this. I had the person who replaced me actually just started last Monday. It took over a year to replace me. It just makes me sad, I guess. I don't know. I don't know if that's good or bad. And a wonderful human being and I wish him all the luck in the world and he'll do well. My executive, who will now be supporting him, just sent me a really kind note and just said, I just want to say thank you for how you empowered me to do my job and you helped me understand that I had more power than I thought I did to be able to do the work that I needed to do because that's gonna help me as I go to support this other person. And so being able to ask for help and being okay with that is also really important. Nobody's a superhuman. Nobody can do all these jobs, like I said, by, by themselves. That's important. It's also important to write, size your work plans. So if there's too much on your plate, too much on my plate, I have to be able to be in a space where I need to acknowledge that and we need to course correct if that's necessary. And that's okay. Like, and I think sometimes people need reminders of that because I think sometimes people feel like, no, I have to get all these things done. No, we're not gonna get this done. We have deadlines. It's like, well, okay, what's gonna happen if that deadline is three weeks from now versus today? How can we figure out how to manage this differently? So some different ways I manage that.
Thank you.
Everybody's had a chance, right?
That's right.
Do you have any questions of us?
Yes, I know. Okay, I have a few and I, we could get done early too, so I won't take all the time to ask these questions. What do you?
Have you known this group?
I know. I'm sorry. I guess even putting it into the atmosphere, doomed us in the night. Let's see. What do you see as one big challenge and one big opportunity for the person in the city manager role? It's a lot easier to ask the questions, I'm just saying.
Cables return. Well, if you don't mind, I'll go. The immediate thing that came to my mind when, when you asked that question was what, we, we, Bloomington is in a very specific spot and a, and it's, I think it's a little bit unique among the cities around us in the sense that there is so much growth potential here and also the, there is, we're, we're well positioned in the sense of the diversity of our, our tax base and other things like that compared to other places. But I think that hand, that, that's, that kind of hangs by a thread a little bit. And, and especially given the volatility of the markets and the decision-making at the federal level and other things like that. I think we have, so I guess, I guess the challenge I think we have is to be conservative, small C conservative, about the way that we approach continuing to drive, to drive the investments we know we need to make because the city is behind on investing in the, the, the reality of, of what the place needs to be over the next 50 years. So to me, that's an opportunity, right? It's positive, but there's a real challenge in that, in my opinion. And so when I think about what the city manager that I'm looking for is, needs to do is that, is to have a, a strong vision for how to shepherd us all through that process. Because that, that's not the, that you won't be making the decision necessarily. The city manager wouldn't make the decision. But having an efficient and transparent process for shepherding us through that is, in my opinion, critical.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any else? Anyone else want to try?
Sure. Yeah. What I would say is that I think the opportunity, I agree with you on that in terms of the, the budget, in terms of, in terms of the the budget, face of renewal, that's an opportunity. And then the challenge, I think it's really around staff stability. How are we, are we able to have a stable staff? Because there's, you know, there's a lot of resources that are in with that staff. You know, they go back to the budget, you gotta cut that. So people stick around. So how do you kind of balance those two things?
And my piece is Bloomington has had three city managers over thirty years. There's certain expectations that come with that. And so how do you, how do you leave your own legacy and be who you are while living up to those expectations? And so I think there's, it's the challenge and opportunity all in one.
I have ideas for that, but I can't talk about it. This is the recording part. I like that. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, another question. I'll take that as an opportunity. How, because this position is your one hire and you work to do performance evaluations of this work, how do you see your role around guiding a city manager, providing professional development opportunities? It's lonely at the top, right? So it's this role's job to do that for everyone else. What is your expectation around your role for that type, for investing in a city manager?
That's interesting, because I, Wayne and I were around when it had been literally a decade before the city manager, since the city manager had a performance evaluation.
Oh, my goodness.
Literally a decade. And and to to move into that was, he saw it as an instinct. So I think, I mean, I think the the whole, the council's role, any supervisory individuals or groups' role, yes, you do the yearly performance evaluation. But if there's anything on the end of evaluation, that's a surprise. You've done it wrong, because the performance evaluation should happen basically every week. Every time you sit down with someone, there should be a performance evaluation. It should be opportunities for a discussion about what what went well, what didn't go very well, how could be improved? And then opportunities for, I mean, professional development, which is enormous, I think, in any role. And I think in in this role, I mean, with ICMA, with any of the the city organizations with, you know, just just the interactions and the collaboration with other city managers across the metro area, both formally and in. And I think there are plenty of opportunities and I think there are plenty of plenty of ways that we probably haven't thought of yet. I think that this person could say, yeah, but what about this? And it would make sense for the professional development as it not only reflects on the individual, but also on how an individual can serve.
Thank you. Any others on that one?
I mean, I would just say that it, you know, I think that that professional development piece and feeling supported is just absolutely imperative. And I think if the next city manager weren't taking time to, if we weren't having those conversations, if there wasn't that kind of initiative to continue to learn and grow, whether that be with other city managers or through professional development opportunities. I mean, I would find that concerning, but I don't, I don't foresee that happening because I think exactly what you said, like, there's just kind of, like, I think it's like continuous conversations and check-ins and the performance review and things like that, so.
And I will say, I think my expectation for this person is continued leadership roles in both the metro and the state. And and I would say that not only of our appointed officials, I would say that of our elected officials also gain.
I've heard that one before.
Is plenty of opportunities.
I'm on the, you know, Minnesota Cities Climate Coalition Steering Committee, so, you know, stage life role, I just want you to know. And I think you have a position at the state as well.
Health services and vice versa.
I'm just saying, this side of the table is. If I could just add one more thing, if you don't mind, Kathy. The the other thing I would say is, one of the challenges I think we have is that we only get together formally once a year to do that professional evaluation of you. The rest of the time, we're talking largely one-on-one with each of you. We each are talking with you individually, right? And so what, because otherwise we're gonna violate some meeting rules. I would love it if we did them on a quarterly basis, but that's challenging, right? And and I understand that. So so the the big question, I think, I would say is, one of the areas of opportunity that I I didn't have, I didn't see with the previous city manager that I would want to address in the going forward here with whoever the candidate is, is to say, like, when when we give you feedback and you're getting something, I'd love to know what other people are giving you as feedback as well. And so to make sure that that there's a chance for, is something rising to the top because it's been, you've been hearing it from a number of us? And if so, does that change the priority than that, you know, the the city manager gives it because it's been heard or whatever, as it relates to personal performance or other things like that? So that's that's just one area where we've got to navigate as the group of people. A little bit of a sticky wicket, because we can't just sit down with you as a group and talk, you know?
Yeah. Thank you.
We're down to five minutes. If you, can you open it back up? See if anybody had, see if we can go to the lightning round here, if that would be okay?
Okay.
Anybody have?
One, one question I wanted to give you the opportunity to respond to is, you know, just in terms of qualifications at all, in terms of, you know, if there are any things you wanted to talk about in terms of your qualifications for the position maybe we missed or any question that, you know, you wanted us to, you know, that we we didn't ask, if you had thought that we would ask, that way.
Well, I'm I'm happy to only have five minutes left. Always fun to answer questions. You know, I have lots of years of service in local government. I have been in leadership roles for a very long time. I, and I think that's 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 documented in what you have. I have, I would, I would love for interview processes to also include cohorts of people so that you can hear from other people how they experience me in spaces. And and perhaps you've done that. And because I I do take my reputation seriously, how I show up in spaces. I can be very informal a lot of the times, but I can be very professional as well. And but I work really hard to ensure that other people can do amazing work. And so I don't know that that kind of thing and how people could talk about me gets into a document. But I think that's important to share. I think I've been very clear that I am a people leader. And I think the city of Bloomington right now is a space that needs somebody who will be able to lead people both internally and externally as we continue to move forward. As you all experience what we are all living through right now and consistent divisiveness, we have to keep pushing for connectedness and bringing people into a space. There are a lot of different ideas, a lot of different ideologies of people who work in this space, and yet we can still do really amazing work together. And I think that's something that I have the ability to do, is to listen to people, see them for who they are, lift them up and help keep moving really good work forward.
I have one. So what would you say in reflecting on your last year in Bloomington? What are you most proud of?
It's a good question. I'm really proud of the work that that everybody is doing. I'm I'm a quiet leader at times, because what tends to happen is people sit down with me, what do you think of this? How are we going to do this? And it's even in areas where I don't have as much expertise as other spaces. People want to know my thoughts about how are we gonna get through this? You know, we have a situation in a specific neighborhood where there's, you know, something with the infrastructure that is very serious that we need to work through. I don't have a lot of background in that, but what I have the ability to do is to sit and listen and to ask questions. And sometimes being new and being able to ask those questions helps other people to think about things differently and it helps us to solve problems differently. When I got here over a year ago, where we were with both, with all three of the Bloomington Forward projects was a lot different than where we are now. The amount of meetings that I sat in on about how we're gonna get there, how we're gonna get to the end of this, how we're going to be able to build these buildings, it's been a lot of work. And so for me, the the amazing thing that I've seen in this last year is watching our work go from how are we gonna do this? Things are not feeling very good right now to I can do this. We are doing well. We have the ability to get things done. We have the trust. I know I've built trust in staff here. So for me, I am proud of my work with our teams to be able to get us from point A to, I think we're maybe at point N right now on on some of these stuff. I think that's the biggest thing. I mean, it's been a learning year. We we did, you know, I think when, six months ago, when started in the interim role, the conversation was, we're not gonna change a lot of things. We're just here to help keep things together. And then like two weeks later, we're gonna do priority-based budgeting. We're gonna get there. We have faith in all of you. We can do this. So it's not just sitting in a space and just seeing, seeing the things that you know can change and be done a little bit differently. It's actually, let's take a leap and and we're just gonna do this. We're gonna work together and we're gonna, we're gonna get there and it's all gonna be okay. And so I'm also proud of this last year of being able to have a vision for things. And I am the type of person that can see the basketball go in the bucket two seconds before everybody else. And so I I can see, I can see a little bit further, a little bit faster. And so being able to act on that this past year has been, I've been proud of that.
We are at time.
There we go.
Very good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time with us and and great to learn more about you and know you a little bit better. And I hope you got to know us a little bit better.
Yes.
Now we go into our conversation.
Yes.
You know what the next steps will be.
Sounds good. And I think all of you, I know this process is hard. I also know your schedules and it's very hard to get all of you together. So I appreciate you all for taking the time to be here and to lead us through this process. And I look forward to whatever comes next.
Very good.
Thank you.
Do you guys formally take names with her?
Only with my position. No, but you know.
Need everybody equal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I don't know which way I'll go. I'll go like this.
Go that way first.
Yeah, I'll go around. Y'all can move around where you.
Thank you very much, Kathy. Cheers.
And thank you very much.
Two-minute break?
Two-minute break. Stretch a little bit.
Rastron. Yeah, we're open to go on a work conference tomorrow and Thursday. So I will spend four days this week just sitting.
Oh, boy.
And listening.
Work on the conference. It's co-pilot word, I'm all ears.
Conference, and it's downtown, and I'm like.
Well, the rain cooled things off, but it's seventy-seven out. Oh, that's great.
Fifteen-degree drop. It was hot.
Yeah, it was warm today. Yeah, down at sixty, sixty-eight overnight, sixty-seven overnight and rain all day tomorrow. Rain all day tomorrow? Yeah, until about noon or something. Maybe not all day, maybe.
When are you leaving? Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, eleven o'clock. Rain until early afternoon, it looks like.
So what's been the most fun thing you've done in Bloomington since you got here?
Honestly, you know, people ask me all that all the time. Well, you get to travel all these really neat places, but I really don't get to experience a lot. You fly in, you work, you go back to your hotel, you catch up on all the emails and things you have to do, and then you work again and you go home. So that's been pretty much it.
Have you gone to walk around the mall?
I did today, because I missed the window to get either breakfast or lunch at the hotel. So I was close enough, I just took a Uber over there and ate at the Quinn City Cafe.
Yeah, Quinn City Grill.
Yeah. And then walked the mall, a couple of dogs around, get some stuff, check it out.
It's fun.
It's amazing, the walkers over there, we have a communal, I mean, it's a massive community. And it's funny also, because there's like thirteen caribous in that building. And they all open at seven AM, even though the mall doesn't open till eleven. And all the walkers, it's like West Side Story. All the walkers have their routes and they have their caribous that they sit at. And it's a.
That's funny.
Yeah. I could see them there, because they were walking all the floor.
Oh, yeah.
And they walk right on them. There are no stores, following the walls, right, right on the walls.
Is this the mall? The MOA?
I was out there once and I saw somebody in a, one of the motorized scooters doing the route and it's like.
Yeah.
That's really not a thing.
That's not really a thing.
I really like. Everyone loves going.
It's it's nice going on like a weekday.
It's not busy, but how many? All day today.
That's when I go, I go on like, you know, a Tuesday morning or something. And it's like, almost nobody's there. It's quiet, you just like browse. Plus, I also, I also know where the stores are.
Yes.
You have to have a strategy when you go.
Yeah, you do.
Like, like my family will come from Iowa and they'll be like, I'm like, okay, what stores do you want to go to? And they're like, I don't know. And I'm like. Walk twenty miles today.
It's half the fun though, right? You find stuff that you don't think you, you know, you were gonna discover. It's the journey.
You can still do that, but you want, it's like, if you want to go to these stores and we're gonna start here and we're gonna be like, we can stop along the way. But it's like.
See, I didn't even leave the first floor. I just did a couple.
Floor is the best.
Oh, I'm sure it's premium real estate.
Get you coming back.
Actually, the fourth floor is fun.
I mean, for like clothes, I guess.
But it doesn't loop around. You kind of get stuck.
True, you do.
Yeah.
And then you have to get down to the food court.
Yeah.
That's how they get you.
Yeah.
I like the movie theater there.
What do you mean? Yeah, true.
Help me, I would never do that in a movie theater.
So Greg, what's where, what works best? Do we, I go around the table and give everybody thirty seconds to talk and then straw vote? Or what works best in this situation?
I think that is a good approach, but I do want to frame, kind of set the table first. And I think this is one of those really classic times where you as a group, as a council, are gonna have, you know, maybe starting off with some differences of opinion and we hopefully will come to a place where there's a consensus that everybody can support. Because whatever person that you select really deserves and needs the full support of the full council. And I think that's super important anytime a decision like this is made. Even if some of you initially might might felt one way, the vast majority feels the other way. If everybody can come together and support the group's decision, the outcome's better for everyone involved. So I just want to set the table with that. And then I do think your approach is wise, just to, you know, go around the table and let everybody have an opportunity to express some thoughts about the candidates so you can hear the thoughts of your colleagues. And then we can take a straw poll and see where we're at.
So we're not really saying like, this is the candidate I want. We're just saying like, I think these are the kind of strengths and weaknesses or.
I don't know if there's a, I don't, I think either approach is okay. I mean, I think it's perfectly okay for you to to talk about the candidates and maybe what the differentiators are and where you're kind of feeling is the choice you prefer. That's okay, perfectly fine. That's okay, perfectly fine. But I think it's important that all of you hear from each other before we take that poll.
Okay.
Okay, it's July fifteenth. Who's got a birthday in July? It's July. He's got a birthday coming up. How about August? September?
First, obviously, both two great candidates, and I'm glad we asked them both back. I was extremely impressed with Zach. He again, obviously did the homework to know the community, to answer directly. He answered, I'd say, almost every question in detail with stuff specific to Bloomington and his past. He did just a really good job of, of understanding that. He did make the connection to what he has done, where he's at. And I think for me, you know, the biggest question, he was the one that I had originally said, I'm questionable about even having him come in because why? You know, he's got a good job in a good city there. And he, for me, answered that question of the why, why he's looking to make that change. I think on the downside, you know, there's a clear advantage in, for Kathy in terms of, you know, she's already got connections here. She knows the city. She's got the support of staff. You know, he would have to develop all of that. So I think there, those are kind of the key differentiators. I mean, and Kathy always impresses. She's clearly a very good leader of people. She's, she's extremely good with developing people. And, and not just in saying that today and before, but you can see it throughout the organization and all that. So, you know, I think for her, the downside is, you know, she came here not that long ago to be the assistant. And is this the right time to go for the top job at this point? So those, that's my feedback on both, both of them, kind of those and cons.
Everybody else in September? October? November? November what?
Both of them. She goes first.
Yeah, on the eighth.
Yeah, what are you?
Sixteenth.
Get up.
Um, yeah, so I also am just, I'm really impressed with both candidates. Great job, Greg. I, I guess I'll start with Zach. I just, I mean, I think that he is overall very impressive, great background. I think I said it yesterday, the similarities between Independence and Bloomington and just the kind of things that we have going for us and challenges and opportunities and the things that he has experienced there. I think there's a lot, there's nice synergy. And yeah, had a great interview. I think both interviews were really, really good, answered all the questions. And, you know, agree with the downside, kind of like we talked about yesterday, just, you know, if he was coming into Bloomington, it'd not only be like getting to know a lot of people in the community and key partners, stakeholders, legislators, but, you know, getting to know the staff and, and building trust with staff, which takes quite a long time for a new leader. With so, and then with Kathy, I mean, I think obviously Kathy did a really good job too. Very, very impressive. I've been impressed with her since she joined the city. I really think that her strength in being a people leader is why we're where we are today. You know, I think she's obviously built really strong relationships and trust and respect across the city. And I, you know, I was really, once, you know, when Jamie resigned, I was really nervous about just like the progress we were going to make on things. And, and we've just made so much more progress than I expected on the things that we had planned, but then also, you know, Kathy brought up the priority based budgeting and her initiating that and, you know, so. So I think that those are some strengths. I think some of the kind of questions I had coming into the conversation about Kathy were just, you know, she has a very strong background in the county and human services. And I, so I think I had questions around just like kind of maybe the finance piece and the economic development piece, because obviously Zach has some really, that's his, that's where his strengths really are. But I do feel like today in her responses and in the questions asked and what she said, I, I don't, those aren't concerns that would, I, I think she would make a great city manager. Like I don't, I think that she'd be able to do that work very well, because, especially because she is a relationships and people person and she has a lot of those relationships. So I could say a lot more, but I'm going to stop talking.
Yeah, I'm going to keep it short too. I, I want to start with Kathy. I, I believe that she can do it. But that has been my belief from the beginning because I had the opportunity to meet her and ask a lot of questions every time we had a one-on-one. A lot of questions that I wouldn't ask here on regards to hot topics. You know, I wanted to hear what she, her opinion was on regards to those. So I do believe that she can do the job. On regards to Zach though, I, I've been impressed. I mean, he has an unbelievable resume and it didn't matter what kind of question you threw at him, he, he had a response for it. And I'm also impressed with the fact that, you know, there are very few people that when they apply for a job, they know the place, they know the entity. And he was able to, to a certain degree, even recite some of the stuff that I haven't memorized yet. Okay, so that's pretty impressive. So that said, I'm not going to get into much more so I don't give up my choice. But I mean, he's quite impressive.
Anybody else in November? December?
So we're, we're not doing choices. We're just doing pros and cons of each.
If you want.
If you want.
Whatever.
All right. Well, I'm going to take a little bit of a different tack here because I think, you know, if, if all of you who were part of this early on, you know, I didn't even want to do this in the first place because I thought we had person in place that could do this job. So the bar for me was maybe a little different than it was for you, which was I was looking for a candidate that would change that opinion. It, you know, what, what, and in this particular interview I went through in my head, what can Zach tell me that would make me choose him over Kathy? Like I was, that's what I was listening for, looking for. All your questions were great. The, Zach is an incredibly talented individual. I think he would have been the perfect fit for Bloomington ten years ago. I think he's almost, he reminds me so much of Jamie, it's not even funny. And I mean that in a very positive way. I don't mean that in a negative way at all. I don't, I don't know that I heard anything as it relates to staff engagement, organizational effectiveness, priority budgeting, the network of people externally to work with and everything that, that, from him, that would, would change my mind about Kathy being our best choice. But I, so the question I would pose to all of you is it, is it the right time to, you know, given, given where we are, given the way, where the city is, how much is in flight and, and everything, what, what we need for the next five years? Assuming five to eight years is the right answer on most cases. You know, is it the right time to, to make what I would say is a fairly big adjustment to go from somebody who's, you know, not from the state, somebody with no connections, somebody who has no staff engagement, somebody who might want to frankly come in and change everything about it. Because, you know, the board authority is not, you know, maybe that he's not, doesn't know anything about that. We didn't ask him any questions about the police department. I wanted to, I had that on my list, but I didn't get to come, come around to me. I should have maybe prioritized it because we never talked about his relationship with this police department. There's just a lot. So I guess the, the short answer there is, to be blunt about it, I was, I was so impressed with him and I think he's a wonderful, wonderful candidate. I am like, of all the people that we could have found, Greg, just top notch and highly, highly impressed. And I, but I, I can't, I can't come up with anything I heard in the last two days that make me want to change my opinion about being on frankly, team Kathy from the get-go. So my position hasn't changed.
Thank you. Anybody else in December? January? February? Go ahead.
So I guess, you know, kind of having, having been through this, you know, this is kind of my second time. And the, the question that I, I always ask myself is, okay, what, you know, what does the city need from a long-term perspective? And, you know, just, you know, try to treat both candidates equally. And I, I thought both candidates did a phenomenal job to this. And, you know, you know, obviously, you know, one has kind of already built that relationship, you know, with. And so from a, you know, I, I wrote down, here's kind of what I wanted to see. And I, I did some measures to kind of look at that. And so, you know, Kathy, you know, from a written perspective, really, really there. And I thought she did a phenomenal job yesterday. I, I, you know, and also today as well. And, you know, even though, you know, when I looked at my analysis, you know, when I look at the other candidate, you know, hey, I liked him, you know, I didn't have him in my top yesterday at the end of that. He wasn't one of my, my, my top two, but today really did a phenomenal job of really kind of filling in some of those holes, some of those gaps that I kind of, I see. So, I mean, I think both of these folks would be really excellent choices for the city's long-term and for different reasons. One is kind of coming in with, I think, an innovative, you know, new approach, you know, that doesn't have, you know, a lot of the, the vestiges of, of, of a lot of city, you know, formal city management kind of experience and has been here for a while and built some relationships. But on the other hand, this other person has got a lot of experience, been able to get things done, has got a real proven track record, you know, for a city of our caliber that's at the seniority level in terms of where we're at, would kind of take the city in that regard, would take some time to kind of get up to speed, that kind of thing. And so I think, you know, these are really kind of, for me, the, the two different kind of decisions I kind of have to make is that, you know, I'm looking for more innovation in terms of a not formal kind of thing. And I think the council would really have to kind of work really closely with that. But then I think on the other hand, you'd have somebody who really has got this experience and, you know, it's, it's kind of similar to what I've seen in other, you know, when we looked at Jamie, you know, you look at Mark, if you look at some of the other city managers that have been here, kind of coming with that, that experience. So there's some advantages to that too. So dimension is a tough one. It's a tough one for me here. I, I, in a way that it wasn't yesterday. To me, it really clear what I was going to do yesterday.
So I'm March or February? What are you?
I'm April.
Oh, I'm March, so I'll go first. So, well, I want to thank you for bringing us to a slate, a slate of four very good candidates.
Thank you, Matt.
And I also appreciate bringing us, I think, two candidates with two, they're two outstanding candidates, but they're two entirely different skill, skill sets, entirely different skill sets. And it becomes a decision for us to make about what we want. I think Zach has shown over nine years, he has done it. I mean, everything from the, the economic development, I mean, to have two, to have an electric utility, to do the, you know, to do the work that he has done in, in a traditional, very solid city like that, and in the city manager's role, he has done a number of different things. I think all the things that we, we want. I even do think, I mean, for the number of things that he actually name dropped, again, I, I just, there's this in the nagging in the back of my mind if he's gaming it somehow because everything he talked about, we have done here. We've talked, you know, I mentioned it yesterday, the brain health and the, the reinvestment that they needed to do. And today he's talking about Juneteenth for the third time and, you know, all these different things and the parallels are pretty impressive. So there, there is that one side. And then there's Kathy who, who has not done it, but who has obviously the skills to do it and has the, the people and the relational skills to, to make an impact in a lot of different ways. And I, I appreciate what she has done. We, we have seen it, the, the staff building, the, the bringing folks along, the, the keeping this all together when it could have gone sailing out of the, you know, sailing off the rails easily. And she and Elizabeth have done such a strong job with that. And, and I do appreciate that. But as I said, it's two entirely different skill sets, I think, that we're, we're looking at and trying to decide what we want to, we want to make a decision with. I mean, I will say, and I'll just put it out there for everybody. So Dwayne asked the question and I appreciated about Kathy's decision to actually apply for this job. I mean, she told me in our discussions that she would not run, she would not apply for this job. She told me that. And, and I said, I didn't want a, any interim to apply for the job because it complicates things significantly. And I think we saw that. I mean, to have a, to chill the entire Minnesota market out because of an interim applying for the permanent job may have changed the, the outcome of this entire, this entire search. We don't know. And just the fact that, again, she told me one thing and did another. And so I, it's, it's something that I, is factoring into my decision and I'm thinking about, but I just wanted to lay it out there for everybody to hear and to understand and you know where I might be coming from. So, and so.
Finish it off. Everyone said it, two incredible candidates. I want both of them.
About the first time.
I think what, for me with Zach, he's shown that he's, he might be new somewhere, but he's committed to that place. For him to stay ten years in KC, ten years in Independence, like that shows a level of commitment that frankly, we don't see a lot of times in this space and, and, in private industry in general. Everyone's hopping around every three, four, or five years. For him to stay ten years in each place shows that commitment. And I don't have any reservation that if he chose to come up here, if we offered and chose to come up here, he would stay long-term. And this isn't a pit stop for him. What I really liked hearing is that City Hall doesn't have to do everything. And I feel like that's a problem we have here, that we like to do everything. And having that difference, different, different mindset of how can we do, how can we allow others to do better work than what we can do here, I think was, was something that was refreshing to hear. As far as Kathy, she's fantastic. She's doing her job as assistant city manager really well. And she's come in and been the interim city manager and done that really well. And we've all seen it in the communication and how staff is responding. The, the two things she said that makes me hesitant. She said, I say yes to things I know I can accomplish. That concerns me. There are going to be a lot of things as a city manager, you don't know if you can accomplish, but the city council has asked you to do it. And so that gives me hesitancy of, are you willing to take that leap of faith of just knowing without knowing if you can accomplish it? The second thing she said, I've always been pushed into these roles. And then her explanation of, I didn't want to do it, had a lot of conversations with the senior leadership team, and they pushed me into this role. To me, it felt like a lot of undue pressure for someone who wasn't really considering it to get into this opportunity. Not that it's good or bad, but I would have appreciated better if this was from the start. I know this is the next step I want to be at. This is what I want to do. And this is just the opportunity that showed up that has allowed me to do that. Because I've, just me personally, in my own career, that's kind of how I used to do it. You kind of just fall into things, people push you into things, and that's just what happens. And since my dad passed away, like it's shifted how I view like career progressions. And that's just not something that I believe is sustainable long-term when you're, when you're doing the jobs that are as important as a city manager. So those are the two comments that she made that give me a little hesitancy. I know she can do the job. I frankly think she'd be incredible city manager in about three years.
All right, what I, I want everybody to do is take a deep breath. I've got my stopwatch open. We're going to sit here, just sit here with your silence and your thoughts. We're going to do it for about a minute. And then we're going to do a show of hands, okay? Okay, everybody be cool, just within yourself. within yourselves. All right. I, I don't want to go around the room. I would, I would rather we do a show of hands. So we, you know, nobody's counting noses or anything like that. Let's do a show of hands. And, uh, we'll take a straw poll here. And if we, I'm assuming we're going to, since we have seven people here, we'll be able to come to a decision. All right. We'll go in the order we talked to them. Folks who are in favor of appointing Zach to the city manager position, please raise your hand.
This is like our vote. Like, yeah, okay. Yeah.
And folks in favor of Kathy to the city manager position. So I'm seeing four, three. And, um, I, I think what, what Greg said earlier is a very important point here. That this needs to be one of those occasions of my vote, our decision. That we need to be as a council united behind this decision, both here in this room, but certainly as we step out of this room as well. And I think it will be especially important here at City Hall, given the internal candidate and the, and the fact that staff is, is, uh, I know probably listening right now. And we will have a lot of people with comments and thoughts on this. So as we have to move forward, as we do move forward, we do have to make this, again, my vote, our decisions, the city council.
And so just to clarify, so if somebody, I mean, if we're asked explicitly, because obviously people listening can't see, I mean, maybe they'll be watching up there and can tell, um, we can say like, I vote, I supported Kathy. So for example, Kathy, but I'm in, you know, I'm in agreement with the decision. Like I'm, you know what I mean? Like it's not that we can't not share who we supported.
I, I think that is correct. Do you have anything to add to this?
It is correct, Mayor. But I think again, it's really important to frame it because I heard from all of you, all seven of you, not trying to butter me up, but stating very genuinely that you had two excellent, excellent choices. And it wasn't a for or against, it was a difficult decision picking between two excellent choices. And so whoever, you know, ultimately is appointed at the end, needs to know that they have the full support of the council from that sentiment.
Yeah.
And it wasn't a for or against situation.
Yep. Um, yes, I guess I'm also thinking about, um, obviously, I, yeah, I, I'm thinking about staff morale too, right? Like I just, I want people to understand. And I think that that framing obviously is the truth and it will be helpful for staff to hear that too. Um, yeah.
My, my reservation in the whole thing is that, that reality that I gave that example yesterday as we were having our conversation alone. That he was impressive how Jamie knew lots of people out there. And I think, uh, due to the fact that the city is looking to accomplish all these projects that I'm only part of it now because I'm part of the council, but I had nothing to do when they originated. Is to elect Zach, I see it more as a hindrance because it'll take him a year or more to get to know the people that play key roles, not only at the city level business-wise, but county, state, at the national level, you know, it's, the way I see it is, is limited what we can accomplish. We get to know people. We get to learn things, um, like in my position with the national committee. I learned things, but I don't really, uh, I get first knowledge of things that are happening before it's public, before, before it trickles down to the cities, states. But I don't have any effect on that at this point. Um, so to me, getting Zach in here would be more of a hindrance in, in the first one or two years. On the other hand, Kathy already has a lot, knows a lot of people that can influence decisions a lot quicker. So I have a, a lot of reservations and making that call.
Well, and, and I appreciate your input and I appreciate your, uh, opinion there. But this is exactly what we're talking about in terms of my vote, our decision. That for, for you to share that with others would undermine the work that we're trying to accomplish, Victor. I'm just going to say it flat out. If you share it with others, that will undermine everything.
But at the same time.
And I know you, and you, you said it and we've all had our say, but.
And you also said, you said it and I'm just expressing my concern about it. I, you guys have your position. I have my position and I see it from that point of view. And again, it's not that I will go against the consensus, but at the same time, it just like, uh, council member, that I said, uh, it's, it's going to be very difficult to deal with the staff. I, and I tell you because I had the opportunity to speak to a lot of staff, asking them how they felt about it, uh, without making a lot of noise about it. I made the time to come into the city, uh, into the city plaza to speak to a lot of people and ask questions about it. And I think, uh, it'll be kind of a detriment to make a decision like this.
I will just say that when, when Zach comes in, um, I mean, I think that that's going to be, have to be his top priority. Like right away is working with staff because, um, yeah, I just think it's going to be. Um, I mean, I have concerns just about, um, people's willingness to stay and things like that. And not just Kathy's, but like, you know, um, people who really wanted his secret in this position. And so, um,
And I will say, you know, just from my experience in doing this work, um, people are generally kind and open enough to give people a chance to get to know them. And I think that, um, there is always fear and apprehension of change, but, uh, people move past it.
All right.
I just want to say that I, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing what, what each of you are saying. And I appreciate what you have to say about this decision. Not an easy decision. There's that. So I appreciate that. I think those are all really important things and I hope we consider that as we move forward, this decision.
Mayor, if I could make a suggestion for the motion.
Please.
So, you know, we, since Zach is an external candidate, there are a couple of steps ahead, negotiations and, uh, the final background reference checking. I don't expect any situations there, but it might be appropriate since there is positive sentiment towards both candidates, um, to have direction to have the executive committee work with Zach on negotiation and, and have the consultant do uh, the final steps of background and reference checking. And in the alternative, should there be complications, have the alternative to pivot to Kathy. And I need some wordsmithing, obviously. But one motion that provides that alternative might be helpful.
Does this recording get published? It is real time?
It is live.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
There's that possibility that the negotiations may not work out. It's rare, but there's a possibility.
So how do you phrase it? And if things go sideways, how do you, how do you phrase that?
And ask the city attorney to help you with the words.
Melissa, are you there?
Members, I am.
Any suggestions? I'm assuming you're listening in. Any suggestions as to how to?
Yeah, I was typing a motion, uh, at the time, actually. I would say off the cuff here, authorize, um, you've seen my words here, authorize and direct the consultant to work with staff, uh, to work with, um, the designated, uh, staff and members to prepare, uh, and work with the, um, selected candidate to reach an agreement and if unsuccessful, uh, to begin negotiations with the second candidate, uh, with a goal of bringing the agreement to the, the council meeting on August, I believe it's 26th. That was the previously discussed date, but it doesn't have to be that date.
Okay. Do you have that typed out?
I do not. I began typing it and then I went off and started talking live. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Just because.
August 25th, August 25th.
August 25th. And only because I didn't write it down either. And I want, I like the wording and we could simply say, you know, I, I would make that motion. We could vote on that. And then if you could give the, uh, the text, and include, give that to Priyanka in the morning and include that in the, uh, the, the meeting minutes here.
Mayor, I can do that. Thank you.
Okay. So without, did everybody, would everybody, uh, hear and understand that the, the motion that Melissa brought forward?
Mayor, the one other question I would have is for the consultant, Greg, to see if that meets his needs.
It does. It does.
Okay. So I would make that motion and I would look for a second. I'll second. Got a motion in a second to, uh, to move on the motion as described by our city attorney, Melissa Manderscheid. Any further council discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries for three. All right. You got that, Melissa?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Mayor. We will re-listen and get the words locked down.
All right.
So we're all done?
Is there any further business? Anything else? No further business. I would look for a motion to adjourn tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.